We'll open up our work session for January 16th, 2018. Please silence your cell phones and join us in the class.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay Melanie, I believe we have an addition, I don't think any deletions. Do you have additions?
Yes, on the county surplus.
Okay, that's. Okay. Board, do you have any other additions or deletions?
No.
No.
Okay. So, um, once again, I made an error by not looking at the agenda. We don't have public comment on our work sessions, just on our regular sessions. So, that is not part of the agenda. And so, we're gonna go ahead with our 9:05, a little bit early, but go ahead presentation. Betty Riley and Ginger is here also.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Basically, this is very informal presentation. We do not have anything for you, other than just to report on our quarterly activities for the last three months or so. A lot of the work that has been going on here in the county itself is what Ginger's been working on, but there's several projects that we've worked on together. One of which is the Brownsville grant application, which was submitted successfully for review. We do not know the results of that, but there was a lot of work that went into that. Ginger, wanna talk a little bit about your.
Yeah, most of October and early November, a lot of work went into providing information, doing research, and providing information to Cardinal, which actually helped with, they helped with the grant. SCOED submitted the grant on behalf of the partners of Lake County, SCOED, the town of Lakeview, and the city of Paisley. So coordinating with everyone to get the information together for this federal EPA grant took a lot of work and a lot of interest from people, reaching out to several property owners to get their permission to add them to the grant. While we did not have to have properties specifically designated as a part of the grant, we felt, on the advice of Cardinal, that it would be a good idea to do that. So we reached out to Bobby Carlin for the mill site in Paisley and several properties here in the Lakeview area and just outside of the town of Lakeview to do that, so that we could show that there was some good interest.
Ginger, could put the audience set now familiar, can you give the basic description of what the intent of the project was?
Sure. Brownsville is an area that could possibly have some contamination and/or something that the EPA would be interested in seeing the area clean up. And we were, we've been trying to understand what might be a good planning mechanism for our north industrial park and for some of the other areas in the county that have sort of been languishing because of previous industrial work and because of the downturn of the timber industry. So we were working with a consulting firm in Portland that referred us to Cardinal, which is an environmental engineering firm that is international, and they have several offices in the US, but their Atlanta office specifically likes to work with rural communities to help them with any kind of planning or retooling of industrial properties that, you know, when a community goes through kind of what Lakeview went through. And it's been a very long time since we had that downturn, but the properties that we have have had, you know, had some issues around what's the, how to repurpose them, what to do with them. And in conjunction with that, we've had a lot of conversation in our community about housing and about recreation, and, you know, how can we make better use of some of our properties? So that's what the impetus was for this grant. It's a three to five year grant if we're success, or excuse me, a three-year grant if we are successful. It's, we can ask for up to $500,000, that's not per year, that's for the entire project. And I believe we came pretty close to asking for that amount. And it requires planning on the community's part, you know, the partners that are involved would be involved in that planning process. It's not just a government-oriented type of thing, the community has to get involved to decide, you know, how to do this, and also the property owners. The first phase is going out and working with the property owners to help them understand what the program is about, and it's not a witch hunt, that it's all volunteer to be involved in the, in the process. And the end goal is to get those properties back into some significant use and be beneficial to the community.
Well, and Ginger, it sounds like you've reached out to several different property owners, which, like you say, it's not a witch hunt.
Right.
To build, make those property more marketable, more marketable, shovel ready plus, I guess is the way you would say it.
Exactly.
Along with community buy-in, and so, you know, like you say, it doesn't happen overnight, but this is a very positive thing.
It's a start, and I mean, realistically, after this initial three-year phase, there's probably another five to eight-year phase of cleanup and, you know, carrying out the planning that occurs. The really exciting part of it for me was reaching out to the property owners and having a little bit of trepidation, you know, to talk to them, because it does take a strong property owner to think about doing this, and they've all been incredibly positive about it and very hopeful, and we're happy to know that something like this could happen. So that was, that's a real plus.
And just, you know, we're working the program over Clamath Falls, I have been a partner also with the city of Clamath Falls, and we've had, we're starting to see some really good potential reuse of property, and we're able to go in and do those environmental assessments upfront and clear out some of those unknowns that banks and others are sometimes not willing to finance based on some things unknown. So it really, it is a positive program, and I'm hoping, I'm hoping that the funding will be in place starting September next year, is what we're anticipating that project.
Just as we talked the other day, Betty, what you do today in economic development may not come back to your community for three, five, or even eight years, but if you don't start the process.
Yes.
You're not gonna get there, so this is a good thing.
One of the other projects that I have focused in on that we will be replicating here is the Rural Tourism Studio, which is funded from the state tourism department. They actually bring in very, very good consultants. We did three, four, a series of three different workshops in October, November, and December in the small communities of Clamath County, and actually, one of the workshops was held in Doors, Doors and Truly Light participated. And what it focuses in on is looking at where are there opportunities to build on the tourism and the assets that you have here. And so we, Ginger also and I, work on applying for that on behalf of working with the Chamber here. And so in April and May, June of this coming year, we will be holding those Rural Tourism Studio meetings here in Lake County, focused in on your rodeo as one of your major assets, and also potential ag tourism and building on some of that.
And not this year, but the following year will be the 100th anniversary of our round of Paul's.
Yes, and that's.
Now, it was one of the reasons why we were really trying to focus on that and work with Travel Oregon to make that a focus, as well as our outdoor opportunities that we have here for outdoor recreation, those are big with bicycling and hiking and lots of other things, and the geography that we have, you know, that people can come and enjoy the sunstone mines, et cetera, et cetera. And we, actually, this is one of those things that it's taken about three years for us to get it here, and it's finally here, we're really excited. It puts us in, actually, and I don't think I'm really exaggerating, it puts us in sort of a world-class position marketing-wise with Travel Oregon, because they bring in, they don't spare any expense to bring in marketing folks to help, you know, guide and take a look at branding, et cetera, which y'all are already getting started on with someone who went through that program and was very vitally, you know, involved in Victoria. And so I think that the whole county itself is really gonna benefit through this project. We're pretty excited about it. There's a lot of work behind it and on the ground, getting up to it, and then it doesn't just end when the workshops are over with, there actually will be money available, a grant available to continue the effort, so it's, and it's gonna be very helpful.
And the interesting thing about Oregon, the tourism, businesses, for-profit businesses can apply for grants also. So once they identify ways that some of our existing businesses could improve their own ability to market and to, you know, offer, they are eligible to apply, so we will be working with the business.
That is really intriguing there.
It is.
Will there, you two help the businesses?
Sure.
Yeah.
And another part of this is kind of that entrepreneur program that we're working on, you know, again, things, I see a regional perspective on all the work I do, but we're bringing in some of the, you know, the opportunities for entrepreneurs, some of the training we're doing. We're working right now, I think I've got, I've got two grant, loan applications that I'm in process for businesses here, and we're also working on trying to market your incubator facility. We had one success story that will be out in Hood River tomorrow, and we're working with them on his next phase of his business. And again, as Ginger and I were talking about, one of our constraints and the puzzle is how do we get the workforce up and ready to go to work, and that is, it's a universal issue, but, and we're still trying to problem solve that.
Ginger.
So worldwide.
Yeah.
Before we get too far away from the tourism, you mentioned ag tourism. For people in the audience, particularly on the camera, can you expand on, well, first off, when we say recreation tourism, that's, we're pretty much all familiar with that. But can you go into a little more detail for the benefit of what ag tourism.
Sure. Well, one of the things that I think will be very unique, or it will be the most unique for Travel Oregon, is that they have never focused on a rodeo as part of their rural tourism program, so that also, that brings in all of our ranches and everybody else. So it makes sense that we do some, what they call agro-tourism. There are folks that are willing out there, ranchers and farmers, to do tours and to set up farm-to-table dinners, et cetera. People will come for hundreds of miles and pay some good money to just have the experience of going to a branding, being there when they're doing their hay and alfalfa harvest, calving time, blah, blah, blah. They, you know, they're really interested in what we have to offer there in the western lifestyle, so that will be a big portion of what we do. And I know they did that in, they've done that in the Clamath County Rural Tourism Studio, and I'm not sure exactly what they focused on.
Well, it was, it's more from the, both the dairy and the potato, you know, we have a couple of dairies and a couple of the potato harvesters who are willing to give tours and also to just, you know, it's, it's not that something that they do on a full-time basis, it's like you can call ahead of time and schedule it, so if you've got a group coming in and they, you can set up a time, so it's not something they do, you know, for the, but it really does supplement income, and it also helps raise the awareness level. Part of it is bringing the urban folks to the rural and helping explain to them why rural is important, and so it's as much of an educational, you know, training, you know, helping, helping build the language.
Right. And we have, you know, we have a very special group of ranchers here that for some time now have an organic beef cooperative, and the McGardests have been involved in that, the Fitzgeralds.
Withers.
Pardon?
Withers.
Yeah, Withers, and that can really be a focal point for marketing for them too, and people are very interested and concerned about what they're getting in the grocery store, so.
Well, and you're a partner, the Chamber is the biggest drive behind us, because they get the tourism dollars and everything, but it's a partner with the, with the Chamber that helps get this out there and the businesses and everything on the economic development side.
We have a steering committee made up of, I think Ginger said, about 15 people from the community who are very anxious to work on this, so it is not driven through our office, it's driven by the steering committee itself.
Right, and there will be more than those 15 people involved in the workshops, anyone who in the community that wants to be a part of it is.
And the biggest emphasis may be just getting the folks of the city, the folks in the country, to better that relationship. And also, talking about the rodeo, we also have the maybe wild horse training facility in Door, and that would be a tremendous call also.
Right. So there's all of these pieces of kind of working together. We're working with Christmas Valley folks, Ginger's had an appointment up there on Thursday with a business, a couple of business owners up there.
Right, and working with them, you know, we can talk about this probably another time, because I don't wanna take up too much more time.
We don't have another time until, we have seven minutes.
Okay, so, you know, we want to be involved, obviously, in that, in that community, and so I'm, I'm in and out of the community on about a monthly basis, probably haven't been there since just before Thanksgiving because of holidays and schedules and all of that. And the, really, the Brownsville grant took a lot of time, but there's, you know, there's little whispers of things going on, we're really excited about, the Christmas Valley Lodge is up and running, and that's very exciting. Both the lounge and the restaurant are going full bore, I think there are days that they're closed, or maybe Monday and Tuesday, I'm not sure, but they're there for the weekend, the food is delicious, I had to test that out about a week and a half ago, and they're just newly opened again, so I encourage anybody to let them know, give them some support. And everything, all the other businesses that are currently operating up there seem to be, you know, enjoying a good, good go at it. I know we've got a couple that are looking at possibility of some expansion, and we'll see how that goes.
And I like, I, so I think it's a buzzword, ownership, the sisters from brothers.
Yes, yes, the ownership of the Christmas Valley Lodge are the sisters from brothers, yes, yeah.
And that lodge traditionally has been the center focus of the community, so it's nice to have it back up.
Yeah, the one evening that I was in there, that was kind of how it was, people were just stopping by, that, you know, I mean, there were several people in there having dinner, but there were also people just coming in because it was open, and, you know, it was quite a community gem back in the day, and I think people see that now too.
I visited before they came back, the door was gone and everything, it was so depressing to see it, and so.
It looks really good now.
It's great that they actually tackled it, because it was a big project.
And being that it's closed along, it took some of our county departments, the building department specifically, and public health, working really close with the folks to make sure everything was encased and closed and out of the park.
So one of the focuses for this next few months will be some outreach to the community and to the jurisdictions on priority projects for our comprehensive economic development strategy, we're gonna be starting that process. I'm kind of nicknaming it Imagine 2025, because believe it or not, that's only seven years from now, and so trying to get people to think forward, what, what are priorities, strategic priorities will be. Part of that will also be identifying infrastructure upgrades and things that need to happen. I know that the community here, Lakeview, has several that we need to be trying to identify ways that we can work on funding to help them with their water issues.
So Betty, I know you and Ginger are perfectly aware of this, I think our path toward specially, especially in the south end of the county, if what we think is going to happen in the next month or two happens, it goes to everything you just got through talking about, you know, employing folks, job training, housing, services, so I think we, you know, we've got a, it's not a problem.
No.
It's an opportunity.
Exactly.
And this opportunity is gonna be huge.
Yeah, and to that, and we've had conversations with those folks, and they're very, it hasn't scared them away.
Yeah.
And that's the part that I think is really tremendous, they have some faith that it can all be worked with and dealt with, so that's a good thing.
Again, we have the general public here, can you mention what that project is?
That project would be the Red Rock Project, and we are all just.
But I think unlike some of our notices on it, it's not an empty, but we have a lot of faith, I mean, I know that you all know that, but if we're gonna be talking to the audience that's on the camera.
It feels, it feels like, you know, that, that will create sort of what is called a tipping point, because there are other things that are kind of in the wings that I think that will help facilitate.
Another word for tipping is.
Yeah, you said what Dan Shown said for quite some time, the domino tipping.
Right, that's exactly right.
That is what the potential is, and also the existing businesses that you have here, there are some of them, and they're few private sector businesses, but they're good, solid businesses with extension opportunities, and we are working, and we're working with.
And this is the reward that all those businesses are gonna receive as a result of supporting this community through thick and through thin. I mean, we always talk about Collins, which has been huge, but all of our downtown businesses and all of the associated businesses that have really committed to the community, and now the rewards maybe are gonna be there.
So you might have it on your update, but I'd like to hear, Ginger, have a chance to talk about loan opportunities, or, Betty, we, through SCOED, and through the county also, loan opportunities.
Well, SCOED offers what we call our gap financing program, and we are out there working with businesses that are not at that bankable point yet, and so part of the constraint is if they can go to the bank and get financing, we bank off, because that's where they belong. But we do work with those businesses that are either startups or in a phase of growth where they're not quite bankable. We can go up to a couple hundred, $200,000 per loan, and we have available almost $600,000, so we could do three really big projects or four or five smaller ones. We will leverage some of the money that the county also has in your community loan fund, and we promote that also as part of what we're looking at. As I mentioned, we've got one startup, which is a company that I met with actually about a year ago initially, explained to him what we would need, talked to him about some equipment purchase, he's back now putting an application together, and we're also have one that is an expansion of your incubator building, looking at purchasing his own building, and so we'll work with him from that.
Success story.
Those are, and also just letting, you know, the business community, we do, you know, low-key somewhat advertises program, but have to manage the time that it takes to work, because several of these projects take several months. We just, SCOED just approved a loan that we actually initially met with a business over three years ago, and they have a lot of work to do to get their, get themselves to a fundable place, but they are, they are, you know, we're gonna be able to help them.
Well, that's the tools, go ahead to get people to where they're able to be.
And I've noticed, especially the last, this last quarter, there has been an uptick in people coming to my office contacting me with ideas about businesses and wanting to talk about it, and, you know, I always refer them to the Small Business Development Center, and to Betty about, you know, the financial part and getting their business plan together, and that's a little daunting, there's some hand-holding, and that's fine, that's what we're here for. I don't know how many of those are actually gonna be, you know, come to fruition, but we're here and somehow people are knowing about it, and I don't know, I don't know if it is because they're hearing about us, or if there is a general interest, I mean, more interest in doing that, but it doesn't really matter, it's, that's all good, and we're really prepared to help them as much as we can.
Also, when we, you guys, SCOED is talking to us, but they're also talking to the public, we know what SCOED is, but the public doesn't.
South Central Oregon Economic Development District, and I also like to explain that we're one of 10 economic development districts in the state of Oregon, we have a network that covers the state, so my counterparts throughout the state, we meet on a regular basis, we're all, we do similar things, but none of us are totally the same in that what drives our programs, our comprehensive economic development strategy, which looks at our region, which is Clamath and Lake County, and what the priorities are for our region. And they may be, they're different than Hood River, and they're different than Clackamas County or over in the post, however, the services we offer are loan programs, our technical assistance to businesses, and also our, just our problem-solving, strategic planning, project management, we work with our communities on grant funding and other things, and we have a staff of three, so we are busy.
And you are a part of EDA?
We are, we're under the umbrella, we're sanctioned as a designated planning organization, by economic development administration, and so.
Which is federal.
Which is federal, so we leverage federal, state, and local law, and thank you for your support.
Yeah, thank you, good work. A lot, as mentioned earlier, a lot of work starts today, but not realized for several years down the road.
Do you know, I remember when I first came here, going to Christmas Valley with Commissioner Winters to talk about the potential of renewable energy and solar up there, and I know that that has now become quite potential support to the county through the various solar projects, and there's some of the big ones still being planned, so.
The one that's, that's being talked about now by David Brown from Obsidian, and it's been released.
Yes, my son, he was in 1999.
600 megawatts.
Yes.
And then the white paper that was created through the partnership there, Jim Waltz and being COVID leaders, and with your health, that white paper, we haven't used it enough for our landowners, but I bring that out every now and then.
You do, yeah, we probably should publish that again, and then I'd, yes, I have a copy of it that I could.
I would like to get that back out there, because we don't use it near enough.
No, I, I, and I'm not in the loop so much on the solar projects, because they're not going to enterprise on it, so I don't always hear about them like I used to, so.
Well, as investor developers come through, they have a tendency to lock up a lot of property, and the neighbors don't talk, but the white paper explains you should talk to your neighbors, and you should get an attorney, and we do need to get that back out.
Yeah, that's, that's an easy one, we can, we can get that, if you have, if you want copies of it, so you can.
I have copies, but it'd be good to get them back redistributed for the public, I mean, they, they don't realize that as investor developers come through and promise the world that they may lock up their property for 50 years and never get developed.
Yeah, no, there is a eye-opening awareness of this company.
On this potential of Obsidian at 600 megawatts, that would be an outstanding, exceptional first goal, I mean, we, I think the biggest one, the paper set up either Oregon or 56?
Yeah, it is, it is, there isn't anything of that size, and the uniqueness of that one is the new technology they're looking at using battery storage, which if they can crack that and for it with solar, then there's a whole new world of technology that can be employed in.
One of the biggest benefit, like I, if persons periodically said, why are we supporting solar, because it's in the front yard, I can see right hill from the house, but there isn't, they do pay taxes, and the taxes goes to the affected taxing districts. If you get 600 megawatts up there, that's close to 4,000 acres, and it's usually a very poor farmland or poor grazing land, because the state has criteria over there. But additional tax money goes to the county library that the community of Christmas Valley need to rebuild, both to build their own facility actually. need to rebuild, build their own facility, actually.
Yeah.
Also to the school district.
That would be a big boost.
And to the health district.
It would be a big boost to the tax.
Well, just on a per-megawatt-hour basis, that's $4.2 million. And the size of it may change with the technology. We may not take up as many acres as typically you, you know, do. So there's a lot of upside to this.
I'm sure Jim Walz would say that would put us over the tipping point for...
Yeah, last year.
Yeah, it would put us over the tipping point for Lake County making more...
Energy than what we consume.
Well, I've been saying for a number of years, and I commented on the email training a number of times with Amy Elmer on this, and she was kind of perplexed, but needless to say, I don't think, given the situation in Hawaii this weekend, that it's out of the question. And that was a continuation of government facility, huge facility built right here in Lake County where we can offer to the federal government the ability to continue with our government operations because of our climate, because of our renewable energy, because of all the values we have that can supplement a lot of things here.
Okay, any more questions?
Well, I just, I guess I may comment on the solar. I'm supportive as long as it follows the land use laws and all that goes through the process.
Right, exactly, sure.
Because it's very controversial out there. And this one here, we all go through upset.
I just...
If it fits through the land use and through all that, then it's probably good.
Yes.
Yeah. It just takes a lot of energy, no pun intended. Just always saying that when the economy collapsed as it did in 2008, the larger metropolitan area goes down first, the rural community goes down later. On recovery, the urban comes back first, which has been important. And rural community struggles to come back. But it's really people like you guys and the community and everybody else working together help facilitate that recovery. Thank you.
I can, I can see rural hopes.
Thank you so much for the update. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, so we have our 935 ESD and broadband to Warner Valley, $2 per being on that. I've asked two parties to attend. One is ESD. Do you care if I call you a golden girl? You've been instrumental in getting fiber like the base of, and out here. I'd like for you guys to tell us what the benefit, what the process you went through, and what the benefit to the schools and kids. And I also ask the fiber provider under communication, Kerry Cahill, to kind of give us information on what's involved in getting it out there, and also what other services can be provided beyond just a school.
And we also invited from Plush and Adele, who are, because that's the next, I'm trying, that's something. Is there any specific order you'd like us to?
No, to start from day one, when you put the application in for E-Rate.
Day one.
Eric?
I would use sort of day one.
Day one.
Yes, you were there on day one.
Yes, yes, day one, yes.
Well, the E-Rate program is a very amazing program, actually. It's funded through Federal Communication Commission.
Commission, FCC.
The FCC. And what they do for schools and libraries is they take the steam out of the cost of internet and phones, the month-to-month cost for sure, and occasionally we have the opportunity to do something major, like what we did with Paisley, where Hunter submitted a proposal and was awarded the contract to lay 45 miles of fiber between Lakeview and...
Fifty-three.
Fifty-three? Wow, 53 miles.
Right.
Yeah, between here and Paisley, and between, so E-Rate funded 80% of the cost of that contract, which is major. It would be undoable for somewhere with our location, our remoteness. The state of Oregon matched 10% of that cost, and Paisley's school district is being asked to do the remaining 10%. The, the application process is complicated and dragged out. It takes a lot of time. You put in your, your information, and it takes a lot of time to hear back. And the impact, I believe Ken, Commissioner Kessler, I think you were instrumental in getting us a timely, somewhat timely response on our request for extension.
Went through legislature, and they walked across the streets in DC and spoke with folks.
Yes, yeah. In fact, I got a letter from an administrative person at USAC saying that we were granted, but not until December did I get through the normal channels of communication notification that we had been granted, which at that point is a moot point again, you know. So anyway, thank you for that.
USAC tends to sit, USAC is University Services Administration Company? It's a private company that works for FCC, Federal Communication Commission, to administer the E-Rate program. So is, they have a tendency to grant, to approve a grant application, and then they give a ridiculous termination time.
Yeah, for example, with Paisley, we were notified January 19th last year that we were funded for this program, but we had to light the fiber by June 30th, last, June 30th, in order to receive that funding. And if there were any snags along the way, if for some reason weather or some permitting...
Or that it's 53 miles.
Or that it's 53 miles.
Which is not, you know, to USAC, they're like, this is really easy, guys. It's this big on the map in the middle of nowhere.
Exactly.
You guys can build this in two weeks.
Just get more people out there. But if we didn't have it lit, then they would rescind their funding after we've all gone out on a limb on a million-plus-dollar project. So those are the timelines we're talking with.
And we have the same scenario with the Lujah Ward.
Yes, so, and that's, yes, Plush and Adele has also, we were notified December 22nd that that program, that application was funded. I'm not sure how many miles of fiber that is.
I can't remember on that one at the moment, but somewhere close. It's very close.
I don't know if it's been mapped out quite yet, because again, we have this June 30th deadline, and so...
Of this year.
Of this year, 2018 for Plush and Adele. But if we do not get our extension approved, I don't see how we can even start the program.
We have to reapply, and then reapply for an extension if it doesn't go through. It's, USAC is a very great program as far as being federal funds, but it's a very, very challenging program to work with from both your guys' side and our side. It's very difficult.
So how long does it take to actually run the line?
Well, we just sent over a project scope, and I think that that 53 miles is 95 days in perfect conditions, 95 working days. So, you know, we're going to be staging here. We've actually bought some property here. I'll get into that in a little bit when it's my turn to talk.
But we will be pursuing the extension, working with you through the legislature and our representatives.
Very good.
So we just wanted to give you guys the information that we were granted a $1.1 million project that's going to bring fiber into both Adele and Paisley, oh, excuse me, Adele and Plush. And so of this, they're going to fund 85% of that, $1.1 million, which leaves the two school districts there each a little over $80,000 apiece that will be their responsibilities to pay.
Nice thing about that is that they finally realized some of the challenges, and so they've let the school districts pay that, their proportion over four years. So that's helped a lot, too.
And that's four years after the project gets implemented?
After it's completed, after completion, then we put it in as, or part of the bill, or USAC puts it in part of the bill, so.
So you guys are going to be selling a lot of, recycling a lot of beer cans in the next year or so.
Yes.
Could have a cookie dough fundraiser or something.
We are looking at options there, too.
So we just wanted to give you guys an update of what, what is happening, and we've got some board members here giving some support of what, you know, the project. I've given you each a piece of paper that says the Adele School District Internet Usage, and it just kind of describes some of the different things that are going on. Did you each get it down?
Left, I don't need it.
No, I gave her four.
Oh, I don't know what I'm doing, sorry.
And so let's just briefly describe some of the things that are...
I haven't received one.
Right.
I just gave them, sorry.
Pass it down. You get, you get all paper hogs, nobody wants to share.
Yeah, thank you.
But let's just briefly describe some of the things that are going on, you know, at the Adele School. Plush School is very, very similar to this. And you can see that there's all kinds of things that are going on educationally that require an internet that is, one, stable, which has not been the case out in those two communities. And then also having the ability and the bandwidth to be able to do what they need to do. The video and things that they use today for science alone is unbelievable. When you and I went to school and you saw science books and you had pictures of the book, and that was the extent that you got. When you talk about a volcano in today's educational world, you watch a video about an active volcano and what's going on, and people studying it. It's just, it brings kids directly into the environment of what's happening within those, depending on the education.
And to get that, you had to have capacity.
Absolutely. You know, the, the capacity of what they've got right now, if more than one person is trying to stream any kind of video, they're both done, it won't work. And even if the video is of a high quality, like HD, just, it's very, very difficult. It becomes spotty, it breaks up, and different things like that, just because they're just not the bandwidth. So this fiber optic project will give them the ability to stream anything that they want to stream and not have any interruptions.
So I'm sure in the visit here this morning, we're going to talk about other potentially uses of the new fiber tonight.
Obviously, that's the part he did, so. Yeah, as much as I would love to have a little booth out front of the school and sell it, you know. Hunter's not going to let me do that.
That's going to be huge in all three of those communities.
Yeah, so, actually, I just, I'll hop up, have the microphone in. Did you have any more questions, Sarah?
No, thank you, though, for all your...
Also touch on, if fiber would be two schools.
Correct.
But then we have ISP, Internet Service Provider, that will provide it out to the residents where the kids can do the homework with the capacity. That's secondary to the school itself, but just as, to me, it's just as important. Because the internet is today's Encyclopedia Britannica.
Yep, it is.
And with Paisley's curriculum, you know, they've got the high school classes where they do synchronous classrooms for their AP and their college-level credits and all of that. And I'm sure with Adele, there are AP classes in the future or, you know, I mean, there's just, it really broadens that opportunity for those kids.
And a lot of their exams and everything is, have to be done on computer.
Yes.
So they need to be computer literate, and having computers at home at a time-to-little age on. My kids can run circles, my friend's kids can run circles around me on use of computers today.
Yeah.
Morning, listeners.
Good morning.
My name's Kerry Cahill. Nice to meet you there and Brad. So firstly, I just want to apologize to you guys. Hunter has a unique problem in that we're very backend-heavy, and by that I mean we're very technical and construction-heavy and very light on the sales side. That actually is a good problem, but to you guys, sometimes it's a bad problem because we're not here present and talking to you guys about what's going on. So the good news is on that, though, is Lake County has been moved to the top of my priority list, and we're really looking at moving in here. And it's all really about a time thing. So I've been with Hunter since 2001. So when I started there, we were a construction company transforming into a telecom company. So what's interesting about that is we got this contract to build this little thing called the Ashland Fiber Network. So we kind of told them it wasn't exactly the best design, but they had the plan, and this is what they were going to do it, and so we built it. And they forgot to build a connection to Medford, so they had this nice fiber network in Ashland and no way to connect it to the world. So it's kind of like building a water system and not connecting your water tower to it. So we, in all the infinite wisdom of the owner of our company at the time, he said, you know what, I'll build you a line from Ashland to Medford, and I want all half of it, and I'll own all the full contact. And from that point, we became a telecommunications company. Our first contract, and this is important just because so you guys can understand what kind of company we are, our first contract, we went out to all the schools in Medford and we said, hey, you guys have this really slow T1 connection. What if we could take what you're spending now, budget it in, and give you guys a 100 meg fiber connection and build up this? And we begged, borrowed, and steals, we cheated, we did everything we could to get these schools up. I mean, it was, it was, we used to joke about us being ninja cable back in the days. It was four of us, five of us. And so our priority has always been education first in the community, then commercial, and then residential eventually. We haven't done much residential. However, the good news is a community similar to your size that we have fiber in, we will be launching residential services in quarter one this year. So we're breaking our teeth on it. Fast forward, how many years it's been, 18 years, whatnot, we are now 88 employees. We are still locally owned and focused, and we really believe in rural broadband as an economic driver. So when I say Lake County is important to us, it's important for a few reasons. One, we, you know, I'll be honest with you, a big part of this area is very central to Oregon as a whole. If you know the map too well, and I have it up because I know it, but I don't know all your highways out here as well as I should. So the 97, 395 corridor that goes up for Clamath Falls is one way that goes down and crosses the California border. It's kind of traditionally been this invisible line on the California border where no connectivity went south. Didn't used to be as big of a problem, but now it's starting to become a problem because everything's going one route. And if you ever, you know, experienced centrally getting hit by a pole, one route is not a good thing. So, so what we're looking at is Lakeview is in a unique position in that our network is built all the way down from Clamath Falls to Tianesta. So our grand arching goal...
Speaking to the audience, Tianesta is halfway between Clamath Falls and Alturas.
Yes, on, what highway is that? 139. So if you go down 395 and then over 299 to 139, you come back up to Tianesta. So the importance is we want to build from Tianesta to Alturas, from Alturas to Lakeview, and from Lakeview to La Pone. And what we've then created, and this is a long plan, stuff doesn't happen quickly. It's kind of like the ball in motion now, and five to eight years from now, we see the benefits of this, right? That creates us a loop, ties us into bin, ties us into other carriers, and gives a region redundancy, which is massive, especially will be more and more important in the future as technology and cell technology increases. These cell providers, we've got over 125 cell towers on our network. They are migrating to micro cells, which basically are smaller cell sites more often, but they need more and more fiber. So luckily, that's been good for us because they can't wirelessly connect. The type of bandwidth that we're going to need in the future isn't going to be able to be done wirelessly on the back haul. It'll be able to be done wirelessly on the short haul from an antenna to your house and an antenna to your phone, which is great news because potentially in the future, if the cell companies are smart enough, they could blanket this whole area with mini-towers, and you guys would be, you know, speeding along. So, so that's our kind of goal of looking towards the future. So how you guys, you know, play into that is, you know, we want to be partners. We purchased some property in this community up at Roberta. We're, you know, going to be putting in a yard there, and, you know, our growth plan is 15 to 25 new employees this year. I don't know how many of that lands this side of the hill. I'm not sure we have a yard in Clamath as well. So we're just kind of migrating east, and as we can get out and talk to you guys more, we only have so much time. So our priorities are, you know, this is the hottest priority, and there's probably, you know, 10 hot priorities on my list right now. But, you know, I can tell you, and I want to assure you guys, this is something we want to do. So I kind of maybe went off-base a little bit, but that's kind of my story, and I'm wondering what questions you guys have for me, and what we were planning to do, and how we get there.
Oh, you know, the fiber has the main backbone of the electric communities. And then explain how it would be dispersed there, but also maybe what's the benefit of fiber as a backbone versus microwave?
Well, reliability and speed. So microwaves are starting to cap out their speeds. The cell towers out here are actually using microwave backhaul. I've talked to US Cellular about their towers out in this region already, and they want to replace the microwave backhaul as fast as possible. The amount of bandwidth that is actually going to these cell towers is amazing. When they turn up a mobile hotspot, not a mobile hotspot, I'm sorry, a new 4G tower, it typically goes to 100% capacity immediately. So it's pretty amazing to think about that. It's like, oh, you know, you put in a new pipe and instantly it's flowing in full water. So that, that's kind of where we're at, is that fiber would be the backbone. But we're, the biggest problem with fiber to the home right now and like residents saying, hey, how, your constituents saying, hey, how, how do we get this? Our average cost per passing sub is what it's called, so per passing house, is about $4,000 right now. And that's technology, construction, time. You know, this is kind of similar to natural gas coming to a region for the first time. We've got construction, we've got permits, we've got easements, we don't know how that's going to go. Sometimes it goes great, other times it goes terrible. Community partnerships help, starting to put, you know, enforcing conduit at the city level, at the county level, enforcing spare conduit in new buildings helps because that technology is going to be there. It's so much cheaper and easier for the contractor to just lay an extra two inch pipe in there instead of just traditionally leaving one for CenturyLink and the cable company, put a third one for future and just say it can be used by anyone and not, and after it's occupied, not just that person. Because that's the problem is that CenturyLink and Charter with these conduits, they go into it and they say, no, you can't touch it, that's our conduit. Technically, that's not true because it's the tax owner's conduit from wherever the public utility ends. They own that, they pay taxes on it, there's theirs. But we still have to do some interesting things to try and intercept it on their property line. Makes it a pain. The easiest way to do it as a forward-looking county is to start thinking about ways to put conduit in the ground for future use and then not making it exclusive to someone like Hunter to where I can use it, but then if somebody else better than I comes along later, they can use it too without, you know, your infrastructure having issues. So that's kind of, yeah, it's the backbone and we're researching technologies to bring that $4,000 down. And we've done that in this other community. We're actually going to use COAX for the last little bit of mile. Basically the drops from the pole in the house. But we're expecting to easily get 300 meg to all those houses, which is a substantial upgrade since they're at 3 meg right now on DSL. So it's an amazing upgrade to them.
What is it from satellite?
So from satellite, the problem isn't necessarily the bandwidth. The problem with satellite is physics. Your connection can only go so fast to a satellite. Now, they've talked about low earth orbits, but the analysis on that is 4,500 to 6,000 a low earth orbit satellite that have to be launched. And I'm a little nervous about having that many satellites and I'm not sure that it's ever going to get government clearance at that low earth orbit. The military is using them now in Afghanistan and stuff and the low earth stuff works okay, but they still have latency issues because of the time it takes for your signal to go up and come back. The problem is, is when you click on something on a website, you say, hey, I need this. And so you have to send that to the satellite and the satellite says, hey, this guy needs this and sends it back. Right now, that, that's about 100 millisecond lag. And that is getting more and more important as video services, video conferencing comes out, remote learning, all the stuff that we want to promote is, it's almost impossible on satellite. Not to mention your latency goes up as it gets cloudy or you have environmental effects such as snow or rain. So that's the main problem with satellites. We don't really see it as a future technology. We see 5G as being the way that things are going with the wireless networks. And those guys have enough money to deploy and you end up paying a cell phone bill and add on your home for 5G if you don't have a hardwired connection. Now, a hardwired connection is always going to be better than any of those other things, if it's available.
And one of the reasons why we went with fiber is cellphone can be carried all the way to Plush?
Well, the reason you go with fiber is that fiber is literally a piece of glass. And we use very good fiber that lasts many, many years. It's rated at 50 years, I believe. And the interesting thing with fiber is that the technology continues to increase on fiber much faster than it does with COAX. And it's just because it's light signals that they're figuring out how to refract. So literally you have this 53 miles of fiber that we're putting between Adele and Fudge and we can spend a lot of money and fire it up at 100 gig, but that's already available. But if we're not, we're going to light it up at 10 gig because that's much more cost efficient. However, you know, Moore's Law is saying that technology on that, that 100 gig is going to go down in price every 18 months by a factor of two. So now when we look at 10 years from now, that, or even five years from now, the 100 gig will be the same price as the 10 gig is today. And then in five more years, it should be 1,000 gig is the same price as today. But the COAX, they just can't do that. They're not lighting fiber, they're trying, they're dealing with interference because you're trying to shoot through a copper line that lose, has loss.
Back to the cellphone, back then, except to combine, every three years, I called up Verizon and can you get cellphone to Plush? Every three years, they give me the same answer. Called up US Cellular every three years and they say the same thing. Takes a million bucks for cell, for phone service, that's separate. But, and the problem is, the rate of return on that million bucks is prohibited because of the low population. But we can take advantage of the fiber that Sarah and Jack have gotten us out to Plush and also carry cellphone to a point and then the cellphone company can capture it at that end. Is that correct?
That's correct. So there's two people I'm talking to, somebody I actually talked to on Sunday. He's a family friend of mine, unfortunately, we had a family emergency this weekend and he came into town. He's the chief construction officer for a company called Crown Castle. Crown Castle is, if not the largest, it's second largest in the country for actual cell tower sites. So what they do is they build the sites, they actually have gotten into fiber recently. They bought a $7.1 billion company on the East Coast and they bought all these fiber assets so they could connect their cell towers and basically sell US Cellular, Verizon, here's a tower space with fiber, ready to go. So I talked to him on Sunday, I was like, hey, we're doing this fiber buildup in Paisley, just as an instance, and several other regions in here. Let's talk about you guys building new tower paths. Because the cell companies, if they have a tower path and these guys, what Crown Castle does, they go out and look and see where the problems are where, you know, you can't get serviced and they build a path and they build a tower. And then they say, hey, you guys want to lease space from us? We've got fiber and we got a tower, you don't need anything else. And so their, their production time to get in is real quick. And then you end up with all four carriers on there and from a whole bunch of reasons that makes a lot of sense. And then you don't have four towers, you got one big tower that takes care of all four carriers and blocks it out to everybody. So that is kind of the direction we're going. We're also working with US Cellular, Verizon, HT and T-Mobile, so.
My contact with, I talked to Verizon, I talked about private-public partnership because of the cost. Said we don't do that. Speak with a lady named Susan at US Cellular and she comes back with the engineers and said, we're meeting bucks, can't do that. But now that she knows that we have fiber out there, she has her engineers, we're looking at the cost of maybe tapping it at the end of the fiber instead of all the way from here. Also, she's kind of promising. T-Mobile, I understand, is also coming into Plush, Clamath Falls and Lakeview.
Yep, that's over here also.
So you talked about California site and all that and trying to get the fiber all hooked up there. Will it hook in, I'm talking highways now, 395, 140, 31, all this? And Commissioner Shown came into office a little over 11 years ago. He, he said Lakeview is sitting in the best place to be a distribution center.
It is, and we're looking at that as well.
And so as you're looking at this, to tie, try to tie in Reno, try to tie in everything, I, I think, you know, it probably won't happen in my lifetime, but I think he hit the nail on the head. As our highways get improved and everything here, if 97 ever becomes an interstate, we're sitting in a place to be a distribution center. And that's the upward thinking that Commissioner Shown brought forward. And it's always intrigued me. So if, if you're looking at the fiber right now and trying to connect all that, don't, don't forget Reno and all the other places.
So we do have ways to get down to Reno. So there is some fiber that comes up towards Alturas, it just doesn't make it there yet, that Enio's doing. So like, we're looking at it, we're trying not to rebuild anywhere where somebody has fiber. We're trying to work together, co-optition, you know. The areas that we're talking about, nobody has, you know, really fiber there. So that's kind of hard for some of these companies to get on board with. CenturyLink's the world, but the nice thing is CenturyLink has been better about selling us carrier level services so we can buy some circuits off of where they have connections and then build fiber where they don't have it and not re, you know, spend our money to rebuild the wagon, so to speak. Just so you guys are aware, we're, we've been in growth mode for 18 years. And it's been a challenge because they built the Paisley, we estimated our cost about $2 million. So literally our investment in the community is about the $800,000 difference and that's our cost. And if we were retailing this to CenturyLink and I want to build this fiber, it'd probably be $3 million. So, you know, that's kind of how we reinvest every dollar revenue that we have. There's, that's how we've been able to grow and that's how we're planning to grow. We've been on a good heater last, last year. So we're hoping, you know, we're constantly reinvesting this money so that we can have more and more and more fiber. It makes sense as a business and it also makes sense to the communities we serve because of the way that we built it up. Now, I will say that financing has been our biggest hurdle. And the reason is, the brick and mortar banks don't understand what we're trying to do. They think, well, you know, US banks all this, well, unless you want $50 million, we can't help you. It's like, well, yeah, maybe we could take over the world with that, but I, I don't know that we can, we can manage it. So they're, they're looking at like, oh, well, CenturyLink's out there and why are, you know, why are you going to rebuild it? They don't get it. And private capital we've never taken because the owner of our company doesn't really want to give up control and lose our values or our mission. So, so we are almost all self-financed, so that means we're rolling everything into these products that we can as we get them. And we just, the goal is fiber, fiber, fiber. And I laugh about that because, I don't know if you guys remember the old commercials, but it's like, Sunday, 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 you get fiber, fiber, fiber. Like that was, it used to be our mantra in the meetings we used to have and I still remember it because it's funny. And it is our goal is to build as much fiber as possible in the rural community.
And the fiber you lay in from here to Lakeview is additional strands that can, what is it, 96 or 144?
Uh, I believe it's 144, but don't quote me on that.
That's what it initially was. But that's much more than what Paisley needs. So you can potentially just extend north through some lake up to maybe La Pione.
So, yeah, until this quarter, we haven't done, you know, full rollouts to areas. We've just provided to municipalities and education and enterprise. And then we provide it to service providers is how we do it. We go try and find service providers in the community, they provide wireless, it's typically all they can do. Because to build actual plant is a pretty big challenge for, even a big wireless provider to get into a physical plant is a massive challenge. It's a major change of thought. So I will say that even though we are planning to build, you know, and start looking at residential more and more, we're not going to slow down the process. So if there's a, you know, if there's a wireless ISP that's already in place and trying to do stuff or expand the Paisley or expand Adele or Plush, then, you know, we're going to provide them bandwidth, sell them bandwidth and then they can resell that to the, to the end user. I mean, our goal is bandwidth for everybody because it's honestly, if you don't have it, you're, you're receding that movement forward.
So eventually we have, not today, not tomorrow, but we're done to see north and we would have, we're done to see south, Alturas. And then what are we going to do, we're done to see from this fiber to Adele to go on down to Winnebago?
Put that at the end of the eight-year plan. It's, as, as fast as we can go. You know, honestly, I will say that having watched this and transcr, you know, happened over the past 18 years, we laugh all the time and I brought it up earlier, it was like, oh, it's just this far on the map. We actually find ourselves saying that now. We were talking, we were just talking about, I think Crescent City to Clamath over on the coast. And our, our chief construction officer is like, well, it's only that far. And we had it up on the whiteboard and back in the day, that far, you know, a, a five mile build to us was huge. I mean, it's easily, at the very least, if it's all aerial, it's easily $2 to $3 a foot, easily, cost. So, and, and the average can actually go up to five depending on how much med tape you have. In California, our aerial is at least five and our underground is probably 20. Because it's, it's, and that's in good case when we're not hitting lava rock. So legislation and stuff like that really can hurt this process as well. Working in California is very difficult, that's what I was all saying. Very typical.
That's why we live in Oregon.
That is why we live in Oregon.
That's why the Red High Line's skirted.
Yeah, I know.
Touch a little bit on, I have another thought that I'll tap on.
At New Valley probably?
No, well, no. That, I'll catch you on the side on that, it's not a clicker here. But your relationship with Surprise Valley, we was talking about hanging up.
Oh, so our, our relationship with Surprise Valley has been really good. There's been a couple of little challenges. So the biggest challenge we've gotten is from ODOT and this just came this week and you haven't heard this yet. So it actually just came, I think, yesterday. ODOT, the, so there's a permit guy in, out of Clamath, then there's his manager out of Clamath and then there is a manager up in Ben. Someone, some directive somewhere has said it is our priority to not have additional poles in Lake County area. So I don't know where this came from, but they, we, they are not saying no yet, so we're not sure if this is a big deal yet. But as of right now, we have already relocated our route like four times and increased our cost by at least $80,000 on the four times.
Kerry, but I want to interrupt you. Commissioner Winters is the chair of the area commissioner of transportation for Clamath and Lake County. Works very closely with ODOT. Please utilize him in any of the issues you're running into.
Yeah, so the challenge, I think, is that somebody at one point in time maybe said, and I'm, I'm assuming here, so don't quote me on this. I'm assuming somebody said, hey, we've already got poles down this one side of the road, let's not put them on the other side of the road so somebody can hit a pole and die. While I do agree with that, the problem is you've got a lot of large rigs out there for farms. Those are transmission poles by Surprise Valley and we can't get enough clearance to be within the NESC guidelines. So we can't go on that pole without replacing those poles. And we can't replace the poles and the cost for that would be astronomical, but not only that, we can't do it. So we would be waiting on Surprise Valley to put together a project, a plan and replace poles and they're going to do that on their own time. So our suggestion is basically we hop off those poles when we can't get clearance. We go to the other side of the road for half a mile, then we hop back on those poles so that both sides of the road have enough clearance so, one, they're not taking down our fiber and two, we need the codes for what the clearance wants. It's a state highway, so their clearances are higher on state highways than they are on public, you know, county roads. So, so that has been our challenge. I would surmise that that thought was made without taking the thought of, well, if somebody runs into a pole and maybe they don't die and they can try and call 911 but have no cell service, it might be more beneficial to have the fiber on the pole than the cell tower out there.
I'd really encourage you to look into ORS and develop and run utilities down rightways from county roads to state highways and everything. There's some pretty good ORSs. We're checking on that through our road department right now, there's private lawyers working down our rightways and stuff. So you have some pretty strong laws out there in support of what you're wanting to do.
We do, and just so you're, in all fairness, my partner Sam Ackley is the COO of Hunter, is the president? No, past president, but still acting, past president of the Oregon Joint Use Association. So we're pretty familiar with the laws. So, and he wrote me a pretty good email that I might just share with you and showing, said this is the, all the issues that we're running into with all the contacts from ODOT. So it's some type of permitting issue, they do have some control, we are pretty familiar with the laws. Obviously, when you start getting lawyers involved to say, hey, you can't do a permit, and that makes it kind of hard to make a June 9 line that we have to make to get the funding. So there's a lot of things in the air that's like, hey, guys, we're trying to get data to the kids and to the cell towers of these communities. Can you not be worried about the pole line? And by the way, and it's in that email, we actually bought higher poles than we normally standardized do and we made bigger spans so that there was less risk just before we even act. Because we thought about this side of the road, we thought about the bigger rigs out there, we raised our clearance above what was even required and raised our spans further so that hopefully a car can dodge them. But, you know, we were taking some preemptive actions, so.
So the, the state can set policy on the way it's put into the right way that you should build and have.
And that's the problem. So the state's saying, who wants you to go underground all the way? That ends the project immediately. If we're told to go underground, it's instantly 10 times worse. So that's, you know, 20 million, I don't know if you can give that, put that together.
The Paisley School Board.
Yeah.
But we would work through that process with the state.
And the other thing is, I'm going to be out here more often. There's been a couple of resellers, resell. And the other thing is I'm going to be out here, uh, more often. Uh, there's, uh, been a couple of resellers, uh, reselling services over our fiber. Uh, and I really want to kind of talk to some of the, you know, some of the entities out here, the county, the, uh, the hospital, the, uh, jail and, um, just kind of, I think that those contracts are out of contract now and just come back and say, hey, you know, we can provide you service directly. Let's see what you guys are paying now. Maybe we can do it for less and, and be more happy. So what, what our goal has always been is to have anchor tenants in every community that we go into. It helps us grow in that community. It helps us put down roots. Um, and so, uh, that's kind of what we need to go back and do because we let it, in our folly, we let a, we let a reseller, uh, kind of come in and sell it because we resold it. And it was like, well, we built the fiber. We're too busy over here putting down a thousand fires. So that was my apology at the very beginning is that I haven't been more involved with you guys. But I think I will be in complete touch with Ken or anybody can reach out to me at any time and I will help off over here and answer anything you guys need.
Do you have cards?
I do have cards, yep. So I'll leave them for you guys when I take off.
I want to make sure that the Plush and the Adel board members, if they have any questions, I mean, they have to speak to.
So Kerry, thank you very much. Um, anybody else here would like to speak to, uh, the broadband or to the fiber?
I would just say that, uh, in a year or so, Zayo company?
Zayo, yeah.
We can lay in fiber from, what, Seattle, down, down to, uh, Reno and then over to Frisco. But that is a superhighway and they won't have on-ramp, top ramps here, I understand.
No, but I'm, we are, I will tell you guys, we are, um, I don't know how much I can say. I can say Lakeview looks very good to us from a property standpoint, purchasing property and putting down more stuff here. So, um, then that ties into that, that conversation.
And I'd like to appreciate all of you. Let's get back to the, uh, E-rate match plan. What, uh, I'm going to stick to 5,000 plus that the two school districts need to come up with. And we need, as a community, we need to be looking at how we can afford that.
Yes.
And yeah, I mean, these are, these are very, very small districts, as you know, and this is a, it's very, very important, but even just 15% of the project, it's a huge hit for these districts. Um, so, you know, obviously the districts are going to be looking to have support, uh, financial support, um, out there in any way we possibly can to help. Uh, because every, every dollar, every dollar that we can get in support, that just puts dollars back into the education of the kids, you know, so.
And we do have the governor's wisdom solution and it may be looking at options, not for the full cost, but all it is, you know, bucket over here and bucket over there that can be completed. But that's already in the head.
Yeah, and just so you guys are aware, in the past, uh, projects like Duke Falls and Prospect, um, E-rate rules or USAC rules were better. And we were actually able, Hunter was actually able to say, we were charging you guys 20%, we, we would put our rate in there. We would actually cover the 20% for the schools. So we were more effective in that because we wanted, you know, that was the biggest thing. It's like, we can't come up with this cash. So when they made the rule that you could spread it out over four years, they really wanted to see these school districts buying in. So that it wasn't just the feds. So that's why it's kind of like, you know, you gotta have a, a foot in the game or a horse in the race. It's kind of like, that's what they're doing and they've hammered on us like, you can't do this. Cause I'm, I've tried to think about it every which way. I'm like, well, why don't you pay us and then we'll give you a check back and USAC would, would redline us for that and so we can't do it. Uh, but everything that we can do as a partner, I can tell you, we will try to do. Another example of that is we found ways to, so there's funding, E-rate funding for, um, uh, data. And there's E-rate funding for voice. E-rate funding for data is based on cafeteria school lunch program and is typically at 90% in as rural as you guys are. And the voice used to be at 100%. It's been dropping 20% a year for the last five years. What's that at now? Zero?
Yeah, this, uh, next funding year.
Next funding year it'll be zero. So what Hunter's doing is we provide voice services as well. So if I provide, uh, $5,000 a month, uh, voice services, uh, to a school and $5,000 a month of data services to a school, and I'm using round numbers or simple numbers here, uh, uh, what we're trying to do is say, hey, how about we bundle that for you and make your voice a thousand dollars and your data $9,000. So what that does is a funding mechanism. Uh, and so we, we're trying to be creative and we're the only people doing it because we're the only people that care, quite honestly, so.
Anything else on there?
Did our members want to say anything?
I think he's covered everything I was.
Yeah, I think Jack spoke very well about how important internet connectivity is to our students. I mean, you know, our, our school is eight, nine kids, fluctuates. So anything we can give them as a learning aid really helps, especially we don't have that class size to help push that forward. Being able to hear different ideas, get outside of that box that we're in sometimes, you know, one teacher and a teacher's aide. It, it's tough to compete with that when you go on to any larger school.
I was going to say that what, um, a couple of the ESDs that we've seen, which is really cool that they're doing is once they're remote schools, the, the one teacher school houses, get connectivity, they're sharing teacher resources. So they'll video conference in a teacher with expertise on stuff and it's so cool. It's like, you know, and, and it's just nice. The kids get somebody else to talk to. The other teacher's typically still there watching the kids and everything like that. But it's cool because you're getting an education from a different, you know, and it's really smart as far as resource and time sharing. It's happening in the medical field and it's amazing in that aspect too.
Stacy Morton has spoke to that too, that she would like to do more of that kind of stuff, so.
Yeah, it's those synchronous class, classrooms, I think is what they call it. And it's very effective. It's very helpful.
And that's why I'd vibrate a silver bird.
Gives kids a different voice to listen to.
Yes. And not anything against our teachers or teacher's aides, but.
Not at all, not at all.
And as in broadening their scope is never bad.
There are things happening down here that the innovation running center of KCC, the synchronization is great.
Was Jim still there? So as a community, as a community, once, you know, once we start talking about fiber and a way to do it to businesses, then we get SCOED involved and we figure out how to get a tech business here, even if it's, you know, five, 10 people. And really, so we have a guy, his name, Mark Von Holly was his name in Medford, Oregon, and he used to be with So Ready. And then he kind of got frustrated that they weren't doing enough. Um, and that's his opinion, not mine. But, uh, so he left and he said, you know what I'm going to do? I'm going to go drive down the Silicon Valley. I'm going to knock on doors and I'm going to share with them how beautiful Medford is and how much fiber is here. Um, so he brought a company called Lighthouse Worldwide. He just happened to knock on their door and, uh, talked to the owner and the owner's like, you know what? I've been waiting to get out of the Silicon Valley forever. Uh, show me more. And over the past two years, um, they are building their headquarters now in Medford. They are, um, they already had a location up here. So that was kind of one where you found out where their headquarters were. They had a small location here and you went to find their headquarters. And so, um, they're building their location. They're bringing 300 employees. Not only that, uh, it's all high-tech. And the, it's funny, the owner came out to the Applegate Valley and bought two wineries next to each other. We brought fiber out there to those wineries and she's building up like a community out there of her C-level employees and relocating them with houses, saying, look, we're going to come out here and we're going to live in the beautiful, uh, area of Oregon. And they're all on board. And guess what? Their costs are way down. When you look at how much 300 people, housing 300 people in the Silicon Valley is versus housing 300 people in Medford. So it's even cheaper out here in Lakeview and we have fiber here. So it's all about going and figuring out an advertising campaign and going and talking to people and saying, hey, look at how beautiful it is to live here. And I know we don't want to bring too many Californians here, but let's bring some high-tech, smart people here and bring jobs so our kids stop leaving. Going to OIT and then leaving the state for a good job. Um, so our kids can stay here because that's really what I care about. Cause I left. When I was here, I went to Silicon Valley when I was 19 and I left for seven years. So, um, you know, it's, it's, it's kind of in my heart to make it be a place where it's cool tech and Eugene's doing a great job with it. Medford's starting to do a great job with it. They're bringing companies, they're attracting talent and fiber is why.
And backup redundancy.
Regional redundancy. So it, it, yeah, so having, uh, everybody's scared of this cascade over where I live. So you guys are on the other side of that, which is really good from a data backup perspective, uh, because I have, I actually have a client that freaked out about, um, having his data backup in Portland and, uh, his, his branch in Medford. This is a bank. They had like 14 branches and I'm like, well, just, okay. And then he had Bend as well. And I said, you know, he was really worried about losing, uh, Medford and Portland. And I was like, well, most of your branches are along the I-5 corridor. It's like, if we lose Medford and Portland, I think you're going to have a bigger problem. You're going to have people with guns showing up to get their money at your branches. You're not going to be worrying about connectivity at that point if you don't have Medford and Portland. So it, but it is a real thing and they said, we don't care. And they bought, uh, services from us in Clamette Falls at a data center. And they're on the other side of the cascade. So if that falls in the ocean, they stole all their data. So, uh, it is real and you guys are over here in that position also. So, and you look at Primeville, uh, and how many data centers they have. Uh, you got Amazon, Facebook, uh, I mean, those guys putting, Apple putting massive data centers up there. I mean, it's huge tax revenue. And honestly, um, the footprint isn't that bad if you guys are thinking about, about, oh God, that's a lot of Californians. Um, the, uh, these big data centers don't require that many people to run them, but it's a good amount of high-tech people. You got these massive data centers and they're, you know, maybe not such a high source to get them out somewhere, but they just ran by, you know, 10, 20 employees and you're like, wow, that's pretty amazing. But they're good high-tech, not paying jobs, bring money in community, so.
Yep. Anything else?
And, um, I don't know if you have any comments, Plush, it's, and it's, this setup is a little bit different than Adel's. I don't know if you.
It's technology that's all over my head.
Well, I'm, I'm available for a few hours after this for anybody that wants to go have lunch or whatever. We can round table.
Perfect, Kerry. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Kerry. Appreciate it.
Yeah, there.
Thanks for taking that long ride over.
Uh, it was beautiful this morning. Uh, it was really awesome actually, so.
Okay, so. I see a request for a five-minute break. So we're going to take a five-minute break. It'll be about seven minutes. We got, be back at 10:30.